All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March sixteenth Franklin Township Planning Board Virtual Meeting. My name is Charles T. Brown. I'm the Vice Chair and I'll be overseeing tonight's meeting. We're going to start with a reading of the Sunshine Law. So please bear with me for a few seconds as I do that. This is Wednesday, March sixteenth, 2022, meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the Planning Board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual and remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the Planning Board was posted in the township's official newspaper, the Courier-News, on the township's website, and within the municipal building. This notice detail the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. One, a link to the virtual meeting via WebEx. Two, a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or in the planning zoning department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. A quick reminder to all board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicants' witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the Chair will ask the Board for comment. In terms of for the public, instructions for you, for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. First, press the raise hand button. To use this feature, click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. And the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have an opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and your full address. If providing a statement, the Board Attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If calling in, please press star three again. And so now, everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the public, for which it stands, one nation, one God, and the people. All right, Christine, can we get a roll call?
Sure, before I do the roll call, I just want to let the members of the public know if you're holding for the meeting, for the hearing, hold on one second. Okay, if you're holding for the hearing of Franklin Storage LLC, docket number PLN twenty-one zero 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 one eight, this is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances in which the applicant wants to construct a three-story self-storage facility totaling one hundred and twenty seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet at two nine seven and three zero five Davidson Avenue, block five zero two point zero one, lots forty-five point oh one and forty-six oh one, uh, zero one, I'm sorry, in zone BI. This matter has been carried to April twentieth, 2022, with no further notification needed. Please be advised, this is the last virtual meeting that Franklin Township is going to have. For those of you wishing to participate in the Franklin Storage hearing, you will need to come to four seven five Demott Lane at seven thirty PM on the evening of April twentieth, 2022, and that meeting will be held within the council chambers. If you have any questions, you can reach me at seven three two eight seven three two five zero zero. My extension is six two one five. So again, if you're holding or you're on the air for Franklin Storage, that matter will not be heard this evening. You're welcome to enjoy your evening, and we will see you all on April twentieth. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Councilman and Barson.
Here.
Carl Howe.
Here.
Mahir Rafiq.
Here.
Theodore Chase.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Mustafa Mansuray.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Carol Schmidt.
Here.
Sammy Shavon. And as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, Chairman Rosini asked to be excused this evening. Okay, Vice Chair, take it away. Oh, I might as well tell you, the minutes for twenty-two, there's quite a few of you that cannot vote. So it's probably best if I just tell you who can vote. It would be Councilman and Barson, Mahir Rafiq, Theodore Chase, Jennifer Ragnow, and Vice Chair Charles Brown.
Thank you, thank you, Christine. Each of you should have received the minutes from the special meeting held on December twenty-second, 2021. Are there any questions? If not, can I get a motion?
Approved.
Mr. Chase, you said motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, so it's very hard to hear you, sir.
Yes, that was a motion by Dr. Chase.
Yes, sir, okay.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mahir. Councilman and Barson.
This is a December twenty-second meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you don't have, you can't vote, sorry, my bad. Mahir Rafiq.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Brown.
Yes, thank you. Next, we're going to move to resolution. We have St. Peter's University Hospital, PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 one six. Let me pull that up. In terms of that resolution, we have, um, they're seeking, they're granting modification of a condition of site plan approval and parking variance, and this is for the St. Peter's Hospital concerning property located at five six two Eastern Avenue, Somerset, New Jersey, and designated as block two six two lot one dot zero one. And again, the docket number for that is PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 one six.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. It's been moved and properly seconded, and...
Who seconded it?
I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, no, sir, you can't vote on it.
When was that from? That was from December first.
Oh, I can't vote on it.
Oh, okay, I cannot vote, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Mahir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and you already did yes or no, so I'll just go down the line, it's fine.
And let's let, uh, Board Member Graham, I think is his name, let him know which things he can vote on and can't vote on moving forward. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move now to a discussion. We have ordinance number four three five nine dash two two, which is for a zoning change. Um, this is an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter one twelve land development so as to change the zoning district designation of certain properties from Hamilton Street Business to R seven residential. Is it necessary to read all of it, or is that enough?
You do not need to.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So Christine, are you able to share the screen? Let me...
Uh, yes. Let me just go into...
We don't see anything yet, it's trying, Christine.
Yeah, you don't want to see what I'm bringing up anyway. My little smiley faces. Uh, one second, I just got to move this down, and I will bring up the... Okay, and let me just go to the map. Sorry, my system is going around in circle right now, I apologize.
At least it waited until the last virtual meeting, right?
Okay, I don't know, can you all see the screen or no?
No.
No.
No?
No.
If we need to pull it up, I can try on my side.
Mine says stop sharing, but, uh, hold on, let me try it again, I apologize. It said, on my side, it said stop sharing, so I assumed it was up for you all. Can you see it now?
Now.
You can see it, okay, okay. Uh, go ahead, Mark, you wish to speak to the, the map on the screen, correct?
Yes, so, so what this is, is basically, it's the, there's a, um, it's basically, what I know it as, the Johns Plaza Shopping Center along Hamilton Street. The, there's a portion of that property that extends very deep into the surrounding residential neighborhood. Um, and the proposal is basically to rezone that portion that is currently undeveloped, um, um, from the HBD zone to the R seven zone. There's also the lot, um, sorry, excuse me, as I look at the screen, Lot sixty-three, which is a, uh, basically a landscaping business that gets access off Mark Street. That's also currently in the HBD zone. Um, the, the, basically what the gist of this is that the vast majority, or pretty much the entirety of the Hamilton Street Business Zone, um, which is intended as a mixed-use, uh, kind of Main Street-type zoning, where you have the, uh, commercial on the first floor, residential above, is intended to occur along Hamilton Street. Um, and throughout the extent of that zone, the zone extends, uh, basically one block deep, about two hundred feet. The one, um, thing that, uh, is, uh, one property that is very different from this pattern is this property. This property extends, uh, or this area extends up to eight, more than eight hundred feet from Hamilton Street. So what the, so you'll see here, what is in the orange is the current boundary, and you can see how it extends a significantly greater distance into the surrounding residential neighborhood. And the, what the proposal is, is to, um, have the zoning boundary in this area follow the overall pattern of the Hamilton Street Business Zone. So you'll see, um, the line that's in red, um, uh, it's kind of hard to, hopefully you're, um, it's hard to explain this verbally and remotely, but basically, the yellow, the orange line would, would go away, um, and that area that's in the back would be made part of the R seven zone, which is the zoning of the surrounding residential neighborhood, and the front portion of St. John's Plaza and the small, um, shopping center next to it would remain, the developed portions would remain in the HBD zone. Uh, so that's, that's the ordinance in a nutshell. Uh, obviously, if any board members, oh, let me explain one more thing. So what this is, is that council has introduced this ordinance. It has been referred to the Planning Board under the Municipal Land Use Law. Um, you are to review it and determine whether it is in, whether it is, whether it is inconsistent with the master plan, um, or if you have any other recommendations. Um, I, I will offer the opinion that this is, um, certainly not inconsistent with the overall zone plan for Hamilton Street, because this actually makes the zoning for this particular area more consistent with the, the entirety of the rest of the zone, uh, and more consistent in, with the depth, um, uh, and extent of the zone throughout its, throughout its length. Um, so with that, again, if the Planning Board has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Board members, are there any questions for Mark?
Does this mean that within properties is now thinking about developing it for apartments as they were going to do about ten years ago?
The, there was, there is some, we do not have an application. Um, we did hear some, we have heard some news of some thoughts of, of doing something along those lines. Um, and this would, if they do want to, uh, redevelop Johns Plaza and the small shopping center in the front, they can still do that, and there's, there would still be plenty of room to allow the redevelopment of those areas. But by doing this, it would not extend, uh, deep into the surrounding residential neighborhood as the property currently does.
Do other board members have questions?
I think that on the, on the map that's shown here, it does give consistency to the zone plan. At the very least, it's not inconsistent.
I have a timing question. If, uh, before the ordinance is adopted by the council, um, would, uh, an application be likely to come in?
Well, I can't answer the likelihood of an application.
Um, and what if?
Mr. Ram, will you continue your speech? You got cut off.
I said, I said, what if an application comes in?
If an application comes in before the zone change were to be effectuated by the municipality, it would be handled under the old zoning standards.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Are there any other questions, comments from the Board? Mark, I'm assuming you need a vote on this one, correct?
Yeah, and I think the motion would, could be worded, um, you know, consistent with, um, what I had mentioned and what Mr. Thomas had mentioned, that, that the zone change would be consistent with the overall zoning pattern, um, and is therefore not inconsistent with the zone plan, uh, and that the Planning Board does not have any other recommendations. If I could offer that as a motion, or suggested motion, I should say.
If we're at that point, I will offer that as a motion.
I can do.
All right, we have a motion.
Councilman and Barson.
Yes.
Carl Howe.
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Mustafa Mansuray.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Carol Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, motion carries. We are now moving into public comments. Uh, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public for general planning comments. I do want to remind the public again that if you are here for Franklin Storage, uh, PLN twenty-one dash zero zero, uh, zero one eight, um, that has been carried to April twenty, 2022, and, um, but the Harbor Group Plan twenty-one dash zero 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 two zero will be discussed tonight. However, this is not the time in which that discussion takes place. Can I get a motion to open the meeting to the public?
So moved.
It's been moved, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's now open to the public for comment. Mark, Christine, anyone present?
I don't see anybody's hand, no.
No, I'm not seeing anybody.
All right, seeing no one, can we get a motion to close the public portion of the meeting? We have a motion to close by Mr. Thomas.
I can.
It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to move into the hearing portion of tonight. Um, I would like to reiterate one more time that Franklin Storage, PLLC, PLN dash twenty-one triple zero one eight, is carried to April twentieth, uh, of 2022. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Harbor Group, PLN twenty-one dash triple zero two zero. Who do we have, uh, representing that application tonight?
Mr. Stahl will be the attorney.
I'm so, I'm so, uh, aware of the mood that I was muted. Jim Stahl, S.T.A.H.L., pardon me, the firm is Doris Golden Foley in North Front of New Jersey. Sometimes you see Peter Lanford, but you're also going to see me. And now I understand I have to be, uh, in person next month, so, uh, I look forward to seeing you all at that time. I think on Franklin Storage and something else. Uh, Christine, do we have jurisdiction, or does Peter do that?
Sorry, what do you mean jurisdiction, I apologize?
Has it been properly mailed?
Uh, yes, yes.
The Board does have jurisdiction, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you, Mr. V. Uh, as I've indicated, my clients should be on, Mr. Braha, Brett Scapinetz, the Saro, the Sorocos, and, uh, Corey Chase, and perhaps Mr. Nelligan. Anyway, I try and be brief. Um, I'm not going to go through everything on this application, uh, because the notice is rather comprehensive. But I just wanted to, in, in brief, just provide you with some information. This is, uh, one ten dash one twenty and one thirty of Belmont. And what we've done, my client, the Harbor Group, who is, uh, uh, the owner of the one ten, one twenty, engaged in a swap, if you will, with one thirty Belmont for the benefit of both. So we have a subdivision of a piece of property which will go to one, uh, to one ten, one twenty. They will then use that property to put up the warehouse that has been described at approximately one hundred and fifty thousand square feet. A piece of property is then, uh, what is left and what is going to one ten, one twenty, strike that one thirty, allows them to maintain the existing, uh, fifty thousand plus or minus a warehouse office building that is on site. So, uh, I know that Brett will explain it to you much better than I, but it's the result of a land swap. There are several, I think maybe four, of bulk variances. There are, of course, no use variances, but before you, as a permitted use, we're looking for subdivision, re-subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan approval, uh, and the necessary bulk variances. Mr. Vignolo, the only thing that we may have to do, based upon a change in the design, uh, after consultation with Mark and other professionals, pardon me, the driveway is one foot wider than it originally was. So that thirty-six-foot driveway, and Brett will, uh, address this, does require, I believe, another bulk variance. Uh, obviously, that particular bulk variance is not included, uh, in the original notification, because it couldn't be, because we were addressing comments from, uh, the professionals. But in fact, uh, I have my catch-all that I know you're very familiar with. Any and all variances or waivers or deviations that may be required. Uh, this is not a major issue, uh, it is a minor bulk variance. So when we get to that, I will be asking to amend the application. Uh, Brett, are you there? Brett?
Mr. Stahl, Mr. Stahl. Uh, I see in the list that was provided to me that you had a Joshua M. Seawall that was being represented by Dynamic Engineering, but I don't see his name on here. Do you have somebody filling in for him?
Yes, yes, we thought...
Would that be, because we don't know who that is.
Yeah, it's Brett Scapinetz, I saw his name fly by at the moment.
Brett is here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Vignolo, if you want to swear him in with the permission of Mr. Brown and the Board, I can, uh, move ahead.
Absolutely, Mr. Scapinetz, if you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testament, are you going to prod, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Sure, first name is Brett, B-R-E-T-T, last name Scapinetz, S-K-A-P-I-N-E-T-Z, and business address is two forty-five Main Street, Suite one ten, Chester, New Jersey.
All right, Brett, I'd rather call you Brett, uh, than Scapinetz, I don't...
That's fine.
...pronounce names. Uh, Brett, by whom are you presently employed and in what capacity, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give my full qualifications. Uh, I'm a director at Dynamic Engineering Consultants, uh, been qualified before, uh, over a hundred and fifty different boards, including, uh, Franklin Township on numerous occasions in the past, uh, on various, uh, site plan applications. I think before, between both your planning and zoning boards, uh, my license is still current. I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. How are you tonight?
How are you?
Yep, yep, and, and like I said, my license is still current. And I will be testifying this evening as both an engineer and a planner.
Thank you, Brett, you can move forward.
Okay.
I just want to, Mr. Brown, you, your license as a PP is also valid, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you testified on numerous occasions as a planner.
That is correct.
All right, Brett, you know what you and I have discussed, uh, please, uh, tell the Board what is there now, and what we're going to provide. When that's done, uh, subject to Mr. Brown's decision, we'll either take questions on engineering or move right into the, uh, planning, and they can question you on both areas, so...
That's fine.
Your day.
So if I can, I, I don't see that I have the ability to share my screen, is that possible? So that way I can throw the exhibits up, or does the adjut put them up?
I'll give you that option right now.
Okay. Uh, it looks like I...
While we're waiting, and then I'll move myself. The exhibit you're going to throw up, is this the most revised plan?
Yeah, I'm going to start with the aerial exhibits. I'm basically going to run through the, any of the exhibits that have been already previously, previously submitted. And like I said, I'll start with the aerial, so I'm putting that up on the screen right now.
All right, just so, and I sort of have to interrupt you again, uh, but please, Mr. Brown, the Board, and Mr. Vignolo, we have a, uh, and I think Mark and the staff are familiar with it. We changed the plan to reflect the parking count and the change in the driveway as I, uh, described before. And that is a different document that was in the original submission to the Board. So when Brett puts that up, Mr. Vignolo, I'm going to ask that it be marked as a, as a separate exhibit, because all of the other items that he'll show, uh, are already in the file.
Just one quick question. The, the question, it's a sixty-four thousand dollar question, which is, was it presented to the Board forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting? As long as the Board Secretary had it forty-eight hours in advance, we are good to go.
Yeah, we're good, it's, we, we, we had it a, a few days ago, it's been up on the website for a number of days.
Great, thank you, Mr. Healy.
More than two days.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, can everybody see the exhibit on their screen?
I cannot.
I cannot.
I see you, WebEx, thank you, you're in Cisco WebEx.
We do see your screen, but it's WebEx.
Oh, it says WebEx, all right, let me, uh, let me shift it down then, hold on one second. Let me, let me stop sharing for one second. And I'll go back to it, I thought I picked the right one. Oh, I see, I'm, I'm going to try this one. Is, is that better or no?
Yes.
Exhibit A one?
Yes, uh, this would be exhibit A one, and this, uh, is the aerial, uh, map exhibit, which is essentially the same as page two of our site plan set, but entitled aerial map exhibit with preparation date of two twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, so just briefly, we, to describe the overall parcel, which is block five twenty-eight point oh four, lots nineteen point three one and nineteen point three two. As mentioned earlier, Mister Stall, uh the overall parcel comprises of one ten, one twenty, and one thirty Belmont Drive. So uh Belmont Drive in this plan is running along the right-hand side of the the box uh where the box is the overall parcel, both lots. Uh one thirty is in the lower right-hand corner, one ten is in the upper right-hand corner, and one twenty is off to the left-hand side. Uh uniquely set up, uh the three office buildings are uh there's two driveways, one on the southern end of the property, one on the northern end uh to Belmont. And there's a shared parking and access arrangement between all between both parcels uh where parking is shared between all the office buildings and the various drive aisles connecting the same. There's about seven hundred and twenty two parking spaces uh on the site today. Uh and uh with respect to the impervious coverage that's existing on site, right now it's currently non-conforming. Uh the code, the zone allows for sixty percent impervious coverage. And right now, the current overall tract i- is has eighty point one percent impervious coverage uh surrounding the site, as the board may be well aware, we have Belmont off to the right and uh industrial, light industrial and office uses surrounding uh all four sides of the tract. Uh we, I will now move to the survey briefly. You should be able to see that next. Is that correct? Uh so just a a just a little zoom in to the property, so we're all aware, same orientation as that aerial. This is the Stires Associates Survey that was part of the the plan set, which has a preparation date of six, three, twenty twenty one. And it's entitled Alta Land Title Survey for the uh block and lots, as I previously noted. And you can see in a little bit clearer detail what I described, the driveway Belmont is again to the right-hand side. You have the northerly access drive, southerly access drive, which feeds into the mass of parking that is shared between all three buildings. Uh if you follow my cursor, I now have it right in the middle at Belmont. And you run between uh one ten and one tw- uh sorry, one thirty at the bottom and one ten at the top, approaching one twenty, then move down to the south and then move off to the west, back up to the north, and then back to the west again. That defines lot nineteen uh point three one, which is on the southern end. That contains uh one thirty Belmont, and then one ten and one twenty are in the northern half of that uh line uh which is nineteen point three two. Our, I'm going to move now to our site plan rendering. So this is a uh new exhibit. Uh so not, this is actually in the list. Uh the rendering has a preparation date of two twenty one, twenty two. Um once I get through this, I'm using this just to give the description of the site, but I do as have, as mentioned previously, two additional exhibits showing a couple of changes or modifications to this rendering, uh particularly uh to show the change to the proposed driveway that and and a reduction in parking as well uh to the site. So this plan, this rendering uh is based on the the full site plan set that was submitted. Uh shows the proposal uh which is two for lot, or sorry, one thirty Belmont to remain. You'll see that one ten and one twenty are removed uh for the construction of the new one hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty six square foot warehouse facility uh that'll be situated on the western now half of the property. Uh as a result of then with the construction of that building, uh the associated thirty one docks on the westerly end of the building and one hundred and seventeen uh parking stalls that will be proposed on the southern and eastern ends. That is the primary, uh that will be uh the new uh warehouse and in main, most of the improvements, with the exception, as you'll see, uh running out along the northerly edge in a similar location as the northerly drive exists today, we're proposing the driveway to the warehouse uh to be located. From the southern end of that driveway and then running along the easterly end of the proposed warehouse parking, that's where we're we'll be setting our new subdivision line. So we're essentially altering the line. So instead of being uh primarily running east to west, we're now going to have it run north to south uh where the majority of the frontage will be provided now to propose lot nineteen uh point uh three one and nineteen three point point three two uh will be, we're we're looking to have designated as the warehouse. The proposal, I I will move starting, so I described the warehouse of the loading spaces. Uh the circulation aisle uh of seventy feet plus the sixty foot depth of the loading bays. Uh we then come around the southerly end of the site where we have uh some larger uh parking stalls and a thirty foot wide drive aisle. Uh the stalls on the southerly end are for uh some larger vehicles. Uh they're twenty four foot in length. And then when we head around the right-hand side of the building, we have a twenty foot, twenty five foot drive aisle and nine foot by eighteen foot spaces. For the office building, uh we are configuring it now such that we don't have that shared situation between the off, the two properties when it comes to parking and circulation. Uh so in creating the new subdivision line, we now have a dedicated field of parking solely for one thirty. Uh and we're proposing a secondary access drive to the main parking field for one thirty. Uh the southerly access drive will remain. So if we look at that southerly access drive, someone were to enter in, uh they would traverse around a uh clockwise position or uh pattern around the building, accessing a row of parking spaces in the back of the office building and then the main parking field of spaces that is uh toward the northerly end of the building and then could exit back out to Belmont through a new proposed driveway. The total number of parking spaces shown in this plan is two hundred and two for the office. But as you'll see shortly, we're going to look to reduce that number of spaces down to one seventy uh which is what's required exactly for that office building. Uh additional features in the site plan. Uh we are
Brett, can I just interrupt you for one second? They don't have to see my picture. I just want to clarify because Teddy and I like to be transparent. The warehouse at this time has no tenant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And whatever uh tenant comes in, they'll have to comply with, of course, the existing township ordinances, correct?
That is correct.
I just don't want, you know, uh to miss that. The existing office building, and then I'll leave you alone, uh is going to remain as it is right now uh an office building for the existing uh owner and any tenants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So and we have, of course, the consent of the owner of one thirty Belmont. And as far as we're concerned, and this will go when Corey, our traffic engineer, testifies, the office building is exactly the same tomorrow as it is today. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, I'll be quiet now. Thank you, Brett.
No, no, not a, not a problem. I'm glad you were able to cover that. So uh some other features within the site plan to be noted, we are introducing and proposing a new sidewalk that will run along uh Belmont Belmont Drive that does not exist uh today. So there's a new sidewalk uh being added. Uh there will be uh significant landscaping that is being added to the plan. Uh you will, you see that in this rendering. Uh so in the plan set, you will note in our demo plan, we do show uh the need for tree replacement. Uh we are calling out uh the need for uh seventy four total replacement trees, but we're proposing our plan uh a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees at a total of a hundred and ninety four that are spread throughout the site. So uh in this plan, you can see the new parking field for the office uh has uh islands at the ends of the parking stall, parking rows, uh additional landscaping in the front of the site. Uh then significant landscaping running along the new driveway uh to the warehouse. Uh and then additional evergreens and screening that's provided along the easterly edge uh between the office and the warehouse and then along the perimeter uh of the warehouse building. So uh in total, we have five hundred and sixty seven plantings. Uh so in addition to those hundred and ninety four trees, uh there's uh about four hundred more plantings by way of shrubs uh being planted throughout the site. Another feature that's in this plan between the office building and the warehouse, there is a retaining wall uh in the location where my cursor is now. That is because of the property does drop about fourteen feet uh from the northwest corner down to the southeast corner. So in order to meet the existing grades at the office building, which is to remain and then working with the grades for the proposed warehouse, we do require this wall. So the low side will be against the wer- the office building, the high side will be by the warehouse. And that wall is between three and seven feet. It varies. And that will be a decorative block retaining wall. Uh lighting that's proposed for the site, the, there will be LED fixtures at twenty five feet in height. Uh there's twenty pole-mounted fixtures. And now these, this is a combination of fixtures between both the office uh on the, for the office and for the warehouse. Obviously, we need to light the parking lot for both, lots for both. So twenty pole-mounted fixtures at twenty five feet. And then there will be uh building-mounted fixtures, wall packs on the warehouse. And then we're also proposing some illuminated bollards that will run along the sidewalk uh to eliminate that pathway uh at night as well. Uh we do meet all the ordinance requirements when it comes to the intensity for the lighting being proposed. Uh what's not shown in this plan from a stormwater management standpoint uh is that we do are introducing a new network of pipes and inlets to collect stormwater. It's being generated from the new parking area uh for the office as well as the new can, the new warehouse uh both the for the building as well as for the surrounding parking and loading areas. Uh one of the uh positives for this site is a reduction in overall impervious coverage. As a result of the changes being made, we're reducing, decreasing the amount of impervious coverage uh by almost ninety seven hundred square feet in total. Uh and so that's a huge positive for the site, which also lends us not having to provide for uh any additional uh detention or water quality measures uh in the design because we're reducing the impervious coverage by so much. The I touched on landscaping, lighting, the stormwater management. Uh from a signage standpoint, we intend to meet uh all the ordinance requirements when it comes to the freestanding and building-mounted signage being proposed. As noted earlier, we don't have a tenant for the warehouse. Uh so we don't have a specific package yet, but uh with any details that need to come in for the signage, uh we do intend uh to meet the township code requirements. Uh what I would like to do right now next is to move to the next exhibit. And this is ties in with the changes that uh we were noted earlier that were made uh the respect to uh having discussions with township professionals, particularly when it comes to the driveway leading to Belmont from the warehouse.
Say three.
And so we can make this a three. Actually, you know what? I'm going to move to this sheet. This is site plan exhibit uh with a date of three, seven, twenty two uh with a revision date of three, ten, twenty two. That is minus the truck circulation. Just to make
Three or eight four?
Peter? This a, this would be, the next one would be a three?
Okay, we were up to a three.
Oh, okay, so eight four.
Yeah, okay.
Right, A four.
Thank you.
So one, two changes that are noted in this exhibit. Uh number one, I did testify before, earlier how the site plan set had two hundred and two parking spaces uh in it uh for the office, and we were reducing that down actually in this plan to one seventy, which is the requirement for the office building. So a hundred and twenty, a hundred and seventy parking spaces will be shown in for one thirty Belmont. And then the final total, the final uh total for the warehouse will be a hundred and seventeen stalls for a total of two hundred uh and eighty seven. So that reduction in spaces in this plan allows for us to get to that reduc- larger uh a larger reduction in impervious coverage. And then also noted in this plan at Belmont, uh you can see uh in this plan, the driveway has been widened some. And this is to help facilitate better truck movements in and out of that driveway. So as a result of this change, uh as was noted earlier by Mister Stall, this is one additional variance that we'll need. Uh there is the maximum width a requirement of thirty six feet, and that does not include the radii of the drive. And when we don't include the radii at the end of the driveway for this configuration, we're at fifty five feet. So we are looking for that uh variance in addition to the others that are noted in the professionals letters, which I'll touch on shortly. So uh that is sent, those, those are essentially the only two main changes with respect to this plan. And if I go to the next exhibit.
Brett, before you leave this one, was there a change or recognition of the fire access, the fire aisle?
No, not in, not in this exhibit. I'm going to provide testimony with regards to that.
All right, thank you.
Uh shortly, when we get through the, when we get to the review letters. Uh so the next exhibit, which we can call a five. Uh this is entitled site plan exhibit as well, and it also has the same revision or site plan uh date and revision date. Uh but you will know that there is a truck circulating through here and this truck circulating through with the widening of the driveway, it allows particularly for the movement of the truck, uh the truck making a right turn in and then the right turn out.
Brett, let me inter- interrupt you for a second. Uh you've noted several um exhibits. I haven't seen the screen change. Was your intention to change the screen?
I'm sorry, I did. So if you look at, if you look at what we will call A four, which, which was the same exhibit, there's no truck shown.
All right.
And that should be up there now.
That's correct. I want to make sure the board captures this, the movement on the screen. All right.
Right. And then if I go to the next one, uh which would be fi- A five, that shows now the truck circulating through this plan.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that that's the only difference between the two.
Thanks.
So just to make, while we widen that driveway, it was to help with the movement of the truck so that when a truck turning right, wouldn't have to turn out into the opposing lane of Belmont. And then if a truck was also turning in at the same time, we're not having a conflict at the driveway itself between the 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 truck, a truck sitting at that at driveway looking to leave and a truck turning in. So that facilitated that widening. And that's all I have with respect to this plan. So
Is that it in regards to the site plan?
Yeah, that's it with regards to my direct regarding the site plan and the features in the plan. And uh if there, unless there's any questions, I can run through the review letters.
Are you going to go through staff reports now or is that going to be?
Later. I can.
Why don't you, I'm sorry to uh, you you have to interrupt each other in these uh you want to, why don't you put your P P uh go through the variances in professional planning? And then we're done with your testimony. And then we, and then if they, Mister Brown and the board have questions, they can question you. And then we can move into the staff reports. How's that?
Yes, that sounds good.
That works. So we have a total now of five uh C variances that are being requested for this plan. And I'll go through them, uh list them right now one by one. We have lot frontage. Uh that is because with the setup of the new property line for one thirty, the office building to remain, we are left with a fifty foot strip of frontage to Belmont. So where a hundred and fifty feet is required. Uh our impervious coverage requires a variance uh for the two new lots. Now, even though we're reducing by almost ten thousand square feet, when we split, when we do a calculation for both of the lots, each one of them still is in excess of the sixty percent impervious coverage. Uh nineteen thirty one, uh the existing office will be at sixty three point four percent impervious coverage and the warehouse will be at eighty eight. The depth of loading berth, uh your technical Franklin has a fairly unique calculation for the, for the condition of the loading berth for the trucks on the west side of the building. If we use the largest truck and we double its length, that's how it's calculated. We would be required to have a hundred and forty seven total feet for this area where a bit for the loading and the uh area on front of the dock where we have a hundred and thirty. Uh I have testified um probably on over ten million square feet of office building uh over the last couple of years. And the standard is the one thirty. Um um we're not seeing anything deviate from that uh this depth. This is standard of the industry. This is standard of the industry as we show it. The width of parking lot aisles. Your code requires twenty-six feet as a maximum. For the area, as I testified earlier, just to the east of the warehouse that has only the employee parking. And then for the office building drive aisles, we are proposing twenty-five feet in width. Which standard typically out there in the industry for two-way aisles, called for retail or for office, is twenty-four feet. We're, we're looking to meet in between the, what the township requires in that standard at twenty-five. And then lastly, the driveway width. I talked about that just a moment ago when I was looking, when we go to a five. Actually, I have a four up, that driveway width as a result of the change. Goes to a width of fifty-five feet where thirty-six feet is the maximum allowed. From a planning perspective, I'm looking at the, the lot frontage variance as a C one. And I think this is due to the uniqueness of this condition with the existing property where we have. While we have two separate lots, we have two separate lots that have a lot of cohesiveness when it comes to the sharing of the parking and the drive aisles. And in order to essentially separate and two separate owners, in order to separate them. In this fashion, to provide the layout as we did. Which is a. More traditional, a better layout, not now eliminating that shared condition between both properties. Providing parking much closer to one thirty than is under the previous or existing condition. While meeting its requirement and then also enhancing the landscaping and along the frontage of Belmont. That, in my mind, you know, the uniqueness of the shape of that property, I think, look, would qualify under a C one hardship. Whereas the others, with the, would fall into the umbrella, I think, all at once under a C two, flexible C. Variance and in the case of each of these variances being requested. We are looking at positives when it comes to particularly on the impervious coverage standpoint, the ability to provide a reduction without. Sacrificing the safety or operation of the facility. And then when we go to driveway width, we're also bringing in incorporating the level of safety that's being brought. That is being provided by widening that drive, even though it does require. The width in excess of the requirement per year ordinance. So in my eyes for the C twos, we are not posing any detriment. To this own plan, whereas we're advancing, I think it would be purposes. E, sorry, purposes H for the design of that driveway. And then we are looking at purpose C, which is enhanced light and open spa- air and open space, particularly the enhanced, the increase. Of the previous coverage into the planned design. So I think with that, we, we've got some ju- justification with respect to. How we are for the need for these variances that are required for this plan to be proposed.
Thank you. And Christine, several of my people, my clients, some of the others who are here. We're having problem hearing Brett, I told him he's coming through to me loud and clear. Is there anything on, on your end?
We hear him.
We were having problems here, hearing him, he's like looking up and looking around, so his voice was fading in and out. I was waiting for a break, I know you have a couple of other professionals you want to call Mr. Stahl. We asked that they speak directly into their machines, obviously you're not here in the bill, in the building. So if you could speak directly into your machines and then we, or laptops, we can hear a little bit clearer, that's all.
I, I apol- I apologize, I'm right in front of my screen, so I'm really not moving.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing him loud and clear, but just stay, stay where you are and.
Absolutely.
I, I also don't know if other members of the board had a problem hearing him, but he came through fine on my end as well.
Okay.
We're gonna open it up for, for questions now from the board, if you have any for Brett.
If I could just ask one question, Brett, with the, the change or the reduction in the number of parking spaces for the. The lot that has the office building.
Yes.
What is the, that had to further reduce the impervious, did you have a figure for the revised figure?
No, I have, no, my revised figure is the, hold on, I have the, I have it as the nine thousand. Six hundred and nine thousand six hundred and ninety-three. Is the decrease in impervious coverage.
Yeah, it has to be more than that, because, I mean, if, if originally on that lot. I think that's the lot with the proposed sixty-six point two originally, and that's when it had the, the two hundred, two hundred and two spaces. And you're getting rid of thirty-two spaces and, and you know, then it'd be less drive aisle, so. There has to be.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right, you know what?
Hey Mark, I thought the same thing.
Give me, give me one moment, I, I'm, I'm going off that, that's my number again then from the old plan, let me, give me one second, I will, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And give me a moment, I'll come up with that number.
Okay. And obviously, just for the board, what that's gonna do is that, so the ninth or the ninety-five hundred square foot. Reduction compared to the existing condition, that reduction's then going to be even greater.
No, Mark, I'm gonna, no, it's not, it, you know what, it's not reflected in the exhibit. But you're right, it will go down, so I mean, but if we look at just in general, we're going down to thirty, roughly thirty parking spaces.
Brett, if Dan is on. I'm, I'm getting a text from the group that Dan may have done a calculation for the extra reduction, if you.
Gotcha. Text. It's gonna be, I mean, just, just by the number of parking spaces alone, Mark, it's gonna be about forty-eight hundred square feet. So and we'll, and we'll reflect that in the final plan.
Do we, before we get to the end of this, if we can come up with a number for what the variance relief you're gonna be requesting is, that'd be great.
Gotcha.
So.
You got it.
Makes it easier to write the resume.
You got it, no problem.
Thanks, Peter. Other questions?
Brett, when you're ready and Mr. Brown gives you the go-ahead, you may want to then go into the staff reports.
I, if you're ready, I can go through.
I have a quick question before you go into staff reports, this may be addressed in them though. And it's regarding to bicycle parking. If it is addressed in the staff report, you can wait to answer also in regards to electrification for vehicle charging stations.
Yeah, we'll, I'll address those in the letter.
All right, let's move forward to the staff report soon.
Okay. Do you care in particular order that I go in or no?
No.
Just wanna go, okay, so I'm gonna, with respect, the first one will be the CME. Associates, the engineering letter from February twenty-third. I have no comments there, we will other revise, we'll revise our plans. And address the comments that are noted in that letter, I have no. Other comments than that. Okay. The next one, I will go to Mr. Healy's. Memo of February fourth. And. Again, we, there was the note in the review comments. About decreasing impervious coverage and I will get you that, that final number, which we are now providing in this, in, as shown in exhibits A four and A five. The only other, I don't think there's any other comments. No, there's no other comments to address there, the only thing would be. I guess from the standpoint of the EVs, it's a couple of the letters, it's also in your environmental commission letter, we are going to provide the EV stalls. In accordance with current laws, so those need to be shown on the plan and will, will be done so in the revision. And then bike racks will also be added as well into the plan.
And I'll just say, just so the board is aware that the plans moving forward. I think almost without, without any exceptions, all the plans that you're going to be seeing moving forward. Were deemed complete after the effective date of the, of the ordinance. So it's not gonna be a question of whether they're going to provide them or not, they will have to provide them. So that's just an ordinance requirement and it's state law at this point.
Yep.
Thanks, Mark.
I'll move to the environmental. Commission memo of February eighth. This one does talk to the EVs in a little bit more detail, we, as I know, we will provide them. The only other, and then as well, we will provide the bike racks.
Will the roof be at least solar ready? Of the building?
You know what, I, I believe, yes, I believe, hold on, let me, let me, believe it will be.
I think there's a state law coming into effect shortly.
Yes, the, yes, it will be, correct.
Good. And you could paint it white or something reflective and it'll be cooler inside in the summer.
Gotcha. So then moving to fire prevention. The. One comment that is noticed far, as far as emergency access, this is comment number one on the February twenty-third memo. Number, comments two, three and four will provide, number one. Is asking for a secondary access, so I'm referring to a four. Right now on the screen and our intention is to provide in the southern end of the property between the two buildings. Where my cursor is moving right now, right now there's a trash enclosure for one thirty. We will relocate that and provide a connection at that point, which will be for a fire access only.
Didn't you say there was a change of elevation at that point?
Yeah, there is, we have a little bit of reworking of grade, there's about a three-foot change in elevation at that location, so, but we took a look at it and we can make it work. And obviously, we will work with the fire department to ensure that we're running the vehicles through there as well, but we have room for adjustment in that corner.
It'll only be an emergency access.
Right, but obviously, we need to make sure that the truck's gonna be able to work that changing grade, so. There were no comments from police, and then the last one was from Department of Health and Safety. Dated February eleventh, and I was asking, asking about providing a trash enclosure for the warehouse. We are, we are originally intending to have a trash enclosure on the, on the interior, but we will work with. The department and we can place the trash enclosure, we have room on the southwest corner, near the ramp heading into the building. To be able to place a new, a trash enclosure that would be specific for the warehouse building, so we will add that into the plan. That's all I have with regards to the review, review letters.
Let me bring it back to something, Brett, if I may.
Yep.
Mr. Brown and the board. What was your estimate as to the reduction, the net reduction from the reduction in parking?
Yeah, with, when it came to the impervious coverage?
Yes.
Okay, so I have clarification, the number that I have, I, I've quoted, Mark, is the correct number. So the nine thousand six hundred and ninety-three square feet is what the reduction would be prior to removing the spaces. The reduction was three thousand three hundred and ninety square feet, okay, so.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
And Peter, does that help you?
What's the resulting, what's the resulting impervious then?
Percentage, Brett, can you bring us up to the percentage?
Yeah.
Not less than, there could be change, let's, let's do a not less than, a percentage.
The, the.
Not more than.
Resulting, the resulting percentages are consistent with my testimony, so for thirteen, nineteen, proposed, the warehouse lot. Will be eighty-eight percent and for. The one thirty Belmont lot will be sixty-three point four percent, as I testified before.
Okay, okay, so on the original plan, it was sixty-six point two, so it went from sixty-six point two proposed to the sixty-three point four?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Mark. All right, any more, Brett, you're still there, if there are any more questions from the board?
Yes, we're gonna move into questions from the board. Are there any questions from the board?
I asked mine.
All right, James, let's move to the next one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Saracco. John, are you there, or is it gonna be Lauren?
Let me start my video.
It's a John S A, there he is.
Hey, I got him. Mr. Saracco, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony is going to provide us the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please.
Sure, it's John Saracco, S A R A C C O. One oh eight Home Street in Boeotin, New Jersey.
Could you provide us with your, your qualifications and licensure?
Sure, I graduated from Rinseley Polytechnic in nineteen eighty-one. Got my New Jersey license in nineteen eighty-six, have been actively practicing since then. I've been in, I've been in front of many boards throughout New Jersey over the last thirty years. Not in Franklin, but I've been in front of Westfield, Warren, and many other towns in the immediate area.
Mr. Brown, I ask.
My license is active, yes.
As a expert in architect?
Yes, John, did you state all of your licenses are current?
Yes, they are.
All right, he's approved, let's move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, John, just if you would, as you, we'd like you to just describe ever so briefly but completely. The floor, the proposed floor plan. And just tell us the elevations, what they're gonna look like, building material, colors, accents. We know you do beautiful work, but just show the board, you know, what you're gonna be putting up there.
Sure, I, I'm not able to share my screen. I think I need.
Who's got that, Mark or Christine, who's doing the, who's the host?
Christine would take care of it.
He's, yeah, he should be good now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is a, this is the render, a three-D rendering, looking at. The entrance to the office portion of the warehouse. As you're driving up the driveway from Belmont Drive. The building is a, it's a precast concrete structure, we're gonna be painting. The, 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 the precast, several different colors. We're accenting obviously the office, the entrance. With the, with the nice storefront aluminum, some accent colors, signage on the front. I'm, I'm sorry, we're looking at PB, drawing PB one hundred dated two twenty-two, twenty-two. At the, at the, below the rendering, I'm sorry, below the rendering, if I zoom in a little bit, we see the east elevation, this is the. Side of the building facing the, the office building that's, that's remaining. And what we see here is we, the height of the building, the, the. The client is going after a. Clearly a class A tenant for the building. We, we designed the building to meet all the standards. That this type of tenant's gonna be looking for, particularly a forty-foot-high clear ceiling. Fifty-foot bay, approximately fifty-foot bays. This is, I'm going on to PB one oh one, which is the first floor plan. We have large base spacings of the columns, as I said, approximately fifty feet. We have thirty docks along the back of the building. And that's approximately one dock for every five thousand square feet of warehouse space, which is a very. which is a very uh, which which is a very good ratio to have. Um, you could see the office, the the uh, office um, off the corner of the building when you drive off the Belmont Drive in the lower right-hand corner. Um, the electrical and fire pump room are located um, along that elevation, that side of the building facing the office building that's going to remain. And we did, we did designate a area, um, this hatched area for a possible secondary office. This building was designed that if two tenants want to take this space, we can easily create a partition down the middle of the building and allow for two separate tenants. Um, it's it's the uh, it's the client's intention to um, attract one large tenant. Um, but if if that doesn't work out, we do have the ability to go after two s- two smaller tenants. Um, just going around the building, we're just carrying the pre, this is PB one oh two. Um, going around the building, we're uh, we're just carrying the 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 precast with with the very uh, clean and crisp uh, colors um, going around the building. Uh, we could see the loading docks in the back, the thirty loading docks in the back and the 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 roof um, which we are, as as Brett did mention, we are going uh, with the cool uh, roof standards. And I should also mention that we are um, designing the roof to allow for uh, future solar panels if the um, future tenant does want to uh, to install them. We're we're providing this structural stability for that. Um, regarding regarding building safety, um, I should point out that we are going with the ESFR sprinkler system, uh, which is a very high dilute sprinkler system, a high-flow sprinkler system with an electric fire pump. Um, we have a um, a D uh, generator backup for the for the fire pump. We are providing uh, twenty-five hundred amp electric service, which is um, more than enough to handle the demands of the building and equally importantly, the demands of the electric vehicle charging stations on the exterior of of the building. Um, and um, that's uh, I think that's the building in a nutshell there.
All right, I turn him over to the board, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Asking again, are there any questions, board? Please check to make sure you're not talking in on mute. All right. Do a countdown like I do in my classes. Five, four, three, two, one. Hearing none, let's move forward. James?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, Corey Chase, Corey, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, do we have a picture of you? So you can raise your your hand for Mr. Uh, let John take down the uh, the elevations.
Mr. Stall, uh, just so, who, what what further uh, witnesses do you have?
Corey is the last one. He's my tra, he's dynamic traffic. He should be very uh, quick, unless you have a many questions, which I doubt.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, do you swear the testimony is going to provide us the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record.
Certainly, it's Corey, C O R E Y, last name's Chase, C H A S E, with Dynamic Traffic, located at two forty-five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Can you provide us with your licensure, Corey?
Certainly, a bachelor's and science degree in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts. Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, licenses currently in good standing, also licensed in four other states, and qualified as an expert in traffic engineering before over a hundred municipalities throughout the state.
I gotta say this, don't get offended. You look too young to have been before a hundred different municipalities.
He's a, let's move forward.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Corey. Tell us, uh, give us the results of your uh, investigation.
Sure, as part of our involvement in the application, we prepared a traffic impact study, which was previously submitted to the township dated October sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, as part of that, we prepared a trip generation comparison to determine the increase or decrease in traffic resulting from the redevelopment of the subject property. Uh, as the board heard through Mr. Scapin's testimony, uh, we will be removing a significant portion of office building, which currently occupies the site. Uh, when you compare the trips that were previously generated by that office building to the traffic generated by the proposed warehouse use, it's actually gonna be a reduction in peak hour trip generation when you compare the two uses. So it's approximately sixty less trips in the weekday AM peak hour and approximately seventy-five less trips during the weekday evening peak hour. Uh, conservatively, as part of our traffic impact study, uh, we assumed that both the proposed office building uh, both the office building to be reoccupied as well as the proposed warehouse building with new over vacant land. So we didn't take any credit for more office buildings, uh, which currently occupy the site. Uh, we did do a pre and post development analysis at the adjacent intersection of Belmont Drive and Campus Drive, uh, found that that intersection was gonna continue to operate at acceptable levels of service upon redevelopment of the subject property. Uh, we also analyzed the site driveways and found that those were gonna operate at acceptable levels of service as well. As Mr. Scapin's mentioned, we are compliant with parking requirements, so there'll be sufficient parking for both the office and warehouse use. Uh, we have devised the northern driveway geometry, which serves the warehouse to address the comments issued by the township engineer. Uh, we feel that that access is gonna be adequate to accommodate both passenger vehicle and truck circulation to and from the subject property. That's all I had for direct, Mr. Stall. If you have any answering questions, the boarders, professionals have, or touch on any additional uh, direct testimony, let me know.
Well, I don't have any further questions. Mr. Brownie, Mr. Brownie's uh, for the board.
Yes, board, are there any questions at this time? I know this is the last public meeting, but I'm shocked that there are no questions, especially about traffic, but uh, are there any questions? Is this your last witness, uh, Mr. Stall?
Yes, he's he was my lead. There are no further witnesses.
Or any more questions? All right. At this time, I think it's uh, we'll make a motion to open in the meeting to the public. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor? All opposed? All right, most carries this meeting is now open to the public. Uh, Mark, who do we have on the line? Mark and Christine, anyone present?
I don't see any hands raised in the public.
Yeah, I only see one member um, of the public that's not a board member uh, or our computer or and nobody's raising their hand.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Board, I want to come back to you one last time, see if there are any questions, comments of of any of the testimonies thus far. If not, can I get a motion?
Mr. Stall have a concluding statement?
Mr. Stall? No, uh, I, you know, this is an application that is pretty concise and uh, I I don't, I don't give closing statements unless there's something uh, controversial or or complicated, and I think the board uh, took note of this, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Stall.
Just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Mr. Chase, you've always been a gentleman. A long, many years.
He is the best.
And I would make a motion to approve the application, subject to all the uh, different points and conditions brought out through any of the discussions.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yeah.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brown?
Yes.
And Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Stall.
Thank you all, and uh, be safe and take care of yourselves and go Rutgers. Thank you.
Go Rutgers. And you and Peter are definitely friends, all right?
I'm going of a couple of years.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move now. There are no committee reports. Um, there is no work section or a new business. There is a executive session, seventy-two, seventy-six Madison Ave. I don't have any paperwork before me on that. Are you gonna discuss that, Mark?
No, it it, uh, no, Peter will discuss that. And let me just, Peter, just a point of order here, since we are going into executive session. Um, how do I handle, we haven't done this, uh, in all the time that we've been um, doing this uh, through Web X, we have not had to go into executive session.
Let's do this, and since since we're not gonna, since it's logistically gonna be a little difficult. Um, and the nature of what I was gonna discuss with you hasn't really changed materially, other than letting you know that there is litigation that is really of of no consequence for the board. It was gonna be some brief informative information regarding the nature of it. Um, we can probably carry it to an in-person meeting where we can do it a lot more easily. Um, that being said, I'm not sure whether I'll be at the first meeting or the second meeting in in April, but whichever one I attend, I will give you guys a brief update at the at the conclusion of that meeting in the executive session.
That sounds a good, good idea.
That works for you guys.
Yeah, board members, you were provided both in your packet from March third, uh, I believe, as well as when I sent the email over on last Friday. Uh, the executive session paperwork was in that. If you cannot find it or you don't have it, just give me a call and I'll make sure you have it. And Peter, I'll make sure that uh, you attend always the second meetings, correct? So I will make sure that when we have something uh, for the executive, for the next meeting, I'll make sure that you're there. So I will put it on when Jim is there. I'll make sure you're there.
That'd be great.
Just one thought. I happened to find minutes from the land use committee meeting last fall, at which this really the substance of this case was discussed and whether that would, you know, whether they would have these sand filters.
And let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not get into it.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we hold off on this until we, until we go into executive session? At this point, there's no action needs to happen by the board, so I can give you guys uh, an update. Maybe I'll even have some more information for you next time we meet.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Peter.
You got it. Thank you.
The substance matter then, not now.
All right. But the chase is eager to discuss it, so we're gonna have a great in-person meeting, so be ready, Peter.
I'll be ready.
All right.
Just trying to have that.
That moves us to um, the last item on the agenda, the adjournment. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.